Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. And we will begin. We have three public hearings before we get to the regular monthly meeting for the town of Holden Beach. So, before we get officially started, I'd remind everyone that in that corner on the table are papers that reflect the business that's going to be transacted here tonight. So, the agenda and supporting documents will be found on that table if you would like to help yourself to that information. The three public hearings are going to start at 5:00, which we have started, and there will be public hearing one, two, and three, and then we immediately follow going into the regular meeting, which is normally scheduled at 5:00, but we'll get to the regular meeting as soon as we can. So, the first public hearing is going to be in regards to ordinance 24-08, an ordinance amending the Holden Beach Code of Ordinances. And Mr. Evans, are you going to lead us with that? If you cannot hear me or the person speaking, if you will raise your hand, I'll try to get whoever's talking to speak into the microphones better and so forth. So, just raise your hand if you can't hear or understand what's being said. Those of you that are tuned in, thank you for being in the audience as well. So, Mr. Evans, if you will, lead us.
This is a public hearing for the actual change of a section of 94.03, which is our Frontal Dune Policy, which is a regulatory ordinance to 157, Chapter 157, and turning it into a zoning code. The bottom line is, is that it was an antiquated ordinance that wasn't well-fitted for the town, and it basically helps us make better decisions when we're actually issuing permits on the ocean side of our beach, because it takes away our ability without providing due process for citizens to have them tear down what could be possibly perfectly good structure. It was in the regulatory section. It was set in stone. It was antiquated, and that's what this ordinance is. We are basically saying that if before, when you just basically had to tear down those sections, that now they have to meet a certain criteria beyond just being there for damage, and that if you don't agree with that, then you do have to give process to go to the Board of Adjustments and have a say other than just having the regulatory ordinance. It's probably long overdue, and it'll be one of the best things that's happened for the future. It'll also come in line with some of the new CAMA rules and regulations, and it now is, this ordinance will now give every property owner the option to go out to the last line of natural vegetation if it meets both the Frontal Dune requirement and this portion that's been moved into 157. So, you didn't have that option before. You had to stop and count. Those are the changes, what we're allowing now that were not allowed before. So, if there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
All right. Commissioners, we understand we're going to go to the audience now for comment. Madam Clerk, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. If you would want, if you want to speak to this matter, if you would currently raise your hand, and I'll recognize you to come speak into the microphone and say what you want to say about this topic. Okay. If there's no one that wants to speak, we'll go to public hearing number two. Mr. Evans, I believe that's still you. Ordinance 24-10.
We just did the backwards.
Well, we didn't pay attention to that.
So, now we're going to do ordinance, we're going to do ordinance 24-08. We just did 24-10.
All right. Maybe we ought to go back. Does anybody want to speak to 08 or 010? Either one? All right. Go ahead.
24-08 is an ordinance amending our NFIP guidelines. The NFIP guidelines are essentially that which guides our flood zone construction, and we receive CRS points for how well the ordinance acts within the community, how well it's enforced, and how well the citizens follow the guidelines. The amendments were basically house cleaning. They were recommended by the local Department of Public Safety and FEMA, and really all it was, was there may have been some conflicts between definitions and act ordinances, but they went through it and then sat down with us and recommended these changes. They did not change any portion of the ordinance. The only thing it did was bring all the ordinance together and make them uniform, is all it did, but it didn't change any of the ordinances for how they were applied. It's just text amendments and house cleaning was all it was. Basically, we removed a couple lines, and we changed the definition.
All right. Let's try it again. Does anyone want to speak on either one of these so that you have a full opportunity to speak? Okay? Yes, sir. If you will come speak into the microphone, give us your name. We have to do that for public recordation of the activity in the meeting.
Jim Bauer, 329 Ocean Boulevard West. Just a fast question. The items that are listed in red are being removed? Am I correct in that? Are the items in red being removed?
In the ordinance?
Yes.
Yeah, I believe so. I think it's the ones that are being rejected.
Okay, thank you.
The ones that are underlined are being removed.
They're struck through. They're struck through.
And then the red, the actual red for the substantial, the reds are the ones that they recommend we changes. The strike through lines are the ones that recommend we delete.
Okay, so... I have no further questions.
Thank you. Yes, sir, Doctor.
My name is Phil Caldwell. I live at 121 South Shore Drive, and this has to do with the Dune Ordinance. And I want to thank Mr. Evans for what he's done. For those of us that have been here for a long time on the front, that ordinance has been ambiguous, to say, to say the very least, and he has made an effort to get that cleaned up. Several months ago, we had an issue with the walkway we were building, and he told us to hold on. He was working on it to get it straightened up, and he did, and I thank him for that.
Thank you, Doctor. Anyone else wanting to speak to either one of these? If not, Mr. Hewitt, I believe you're going to lead us in discussion about the...
David.
...proposed budget for fiscal year 24, '25.
Yes, sir. Just for clarification, this is the public hearing on the fiscal year '25 budget, which is the town's spending plan for the fiscal year beginning 1 July '24 and ending 30 June '25. To satisfy the requirements of the public hearing, I'm going to talk about three things. The schedule that the board followed in developing the proposed budget, a little bit about the funds individually, and then some of the highlights embedded in there. So, since beginning in January through this month, the board actually held a series of a dozen workshops in order to facilitate the development of this year's budget. On the 29th of May, the manager's message was published. That brings us to tonight with the public hearing and consideration. A reminder to the board and the public at large that we have to adopt the budget annually no later than the 1st of July. The budget's scheduled next Friday. After those series of six months, the draft budget was reviewed by the board last Wednesday on the 12th, whereby they directed the deletion of the detective position. Also included in the update is the fact that we approved revenue in the Harbor Acres Canal dredging subdivision to include some recent grant reimbursements. And those revisions result in the following amount as surplus and are shown on page three under the Governor's Board General Fund, transferred to the Beach Inn and Capital Reserve Fund, $223,000, $23,095. The funds overview, we pay all debt service. It's almost $3.6 million. We are, this budget will attempt to provide all services at the current levels, and it provides a 3.2 percent quota and a 1.8 percent merit raise. By funds, the totals in this year's budget is right at $24.7 million. I'm not going to belabor in minutia for this before you... Highlights in the general fund, this budget reflects a 13 cent tax rate. It funds an ADA self-assessment, funds meeting room technology improvements, funds a to-be-determined street paving protocol estimated at $200,000, along with two police vehicles, and then transferring $223,095 to the Beach Inn and Capital Reserve Fund. Water and sewer highlights, water sewer capital fee is set at $474, provides for the big one, the Greensboro lift station outfit, in addition to capital outlets for valve lifts and water. Over in Beeport, that fund provides an appropriation to take care of remaining Key Bridge ADA projects at $334,000. It funds a reconnaissance level relook, if you will, for the peer assessment, in addition to a CAMA restroom facility at Block Q, and then also one locker for all the side cast dredging. Continuing in Beeport, this also funds the town's portion of the Corps Coastal Storm Damage Reduction Study, along with engineering and permitting required for future town shovel-ready beach projects. We're trying to get a permit to do year-round dredging instead of just in one time. And it transfers $94,500 to the Beach Inn and Capital Reserve Fund. Over in Canal Dredging, that's our special revenue fund to take care of the canals. That fund is right at $3.7 million for approvals now that sets course of capability to take care of canal dredging in all three of the canal districts. And it also funds disposal site policy development and permit uptake requirements. We've got to figure out someplace to put the hood, and we've got an update on that. For the Capital Reserve Funds, the water and sewer Capital Reserve Funds, a couple years back, we had system development fee legislation, and basically that's the home where those collect the system development fees for water and for sewer individually. Over on the water side, we're projecting a $244,000 approval, along with $579,000, and so, I think I said $244,000, $244,000. The Beach Inn and Capital Reserve Fund is projected to approve at $2.3 million. In conclusion, the budget as presented is, it reflects the dialogues that the board has engaged with to date. It's balanced in accordance to the Fiscal Control Act, and it's scheduled to be considered by the board later on as not to give.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hewitt. Floor is now open. Anyone wants to make any comments in regards? Dr. Caldwell?
I'm still Phil Caldwell, and I still live at 121 South Shore Drive. I want to speak in support of the proposed budget as it was originally written, as it included a police detective position. Sally and I have benefited from a Holden Beach Police Detective, Chief Dixon, when he held that position. It was a return of a TV stolen from our unlocked car at night. I don't leave my car unlocked anymore because I have been adequately admonished by you for doing that. Detective Dixon found the TV at a pawn shop in Wilmington and returned it to us. There's some humor in this story, but that's for another time. The police department acts as a deterrent to crime in what I call our non-gated gated community. I feel safe here. For me, the addition of a detective to the department would add to that insurance. I feel that would benefit all of us.
Thank you, sir. I saw a hand in the back. Can't see who it is, but come on up and speak.
I've been watching these, this program for the past four or five times on my very capable laptop. I can't hear you people speak because you don't talk into your microphones. When the person is up here addressing you and the crowd and speaks like this, you can hear you very well. It's a good program. You can't hear any of it. It's all mumbling garbage. The only one that I can address who does speak into the microphone is the gal at the end of the table.
If you will, give us your name and address.
My name is Mike Falmly, at 137 Carolina Avenue. I live right behind the mayor. I'd like to address the issue of hiring an individual to fill the detective position on the police department. First issue is that it has been apparent, apparently been empty for around five years, and no action has apparently been taken by the board, the mayor, the town manager, nor the police chief to fill the position. The mayor, according to last week's beacon, who had his house broken into and weapons stolen, did not trigger any conversation. I ask myself why? So, I ask, is this an issue which must be filled because someone just raised the issue? Is it now an issue because there might be someone who would like to apply for the job? Is it an emotional issue? Or is it an issue because of a valid documented criteria or state mandate? After reading the chief's reports and listening to his briefings each month, I personally cannot support the filling of the position at this time. Break. If there is some type of documented reason we need a full-time detective, I recommend the chief and the town manager document the issue and prove to the taxpayer that a requirement exists. How can this be done? There are many ways. One would be by conducting an analysis of alternatives, an analytical comparison of the operational effectiveness, suitability, and lifecycle cost of the alternatives that satisfy the capability needs. Basically, document the need for the requirement and figure out how to fill, excuse me, and support the position. I recommend developing three alternatives. One may be without hiring from the police department, using an interdepartmental transfer maybe from someplace else, one using existing personnel, and one hiring a full-time employee. I myself am convinced that the position, if the position was that important, that the position would have been taken out of the existing force, but it hasn't. But you need to do the math and calculate the hours and the cost associated. For assistance, I recommend going to any one of the hundreds of junior college law enforcement and criminal justice programs or town management studies in the area. Students there are begging for research opportunities. I know I had to do a similar study when I went through the 17-week New York State and municipal police academy back in 1976. Once a requirement is documented, the position should be put in the queue with the peer program, Block Q, pumping station, park improvement, stormwater projects, and all the other programs like the handicap program. You saw how fast the handicap program got funded. The requirement was a lethal threat. The town never studied it. We got it shoved down our throats, and we had to pay a lot of unnecessary money to support the way it has been instituted. But you need to do a good job, a good study. Why? Because I know two retired police officers who live on this island who do not agree with the fact that we need to fill the detective position at this time, and you may want to prove them wrong to you. Those are my recommendations.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wanting to speak? Yes, sir.
Brett Shaver, 121 Tarpon. Y'all got a lot on your plate tonight, so I'm going to come straight to the point, and urge you to please fund that detective position. I urge you to support your police chief. You've got a good group there. You've got somebody who's serious. He doesn't come and ask for things one after another like that, so please fund that detective position. We need...
Thanks, sir. I saw another hand in the back. Yes, sir.
Jim Bauer, 329 Ocean Boulevard West. Onto the budget. The short answer is, we're bleeding. We just heard a stat that we have a $3.5 million debt service. That's crazy. We have to, we have to think about the debt service before all other things and all other non-emergency matters. That's obviously true. We've been speaking, this board, the board beforehand, we're always thinking about plans and policies and things like that, but we never do, never seem to do any planning or any sort of research. Onto the 796 OBW, which is actually an item on the, on the regular agenda, but we might as well talk about that.
We can't do that now.
Okay. That's fine. Okay, onto the extra police detective. I know as an ex-New York City cop, when you put a line into a budget, when you operate with different personnel, that's there to stay, and that's there for forever. I'm not against extra police, God knows, but I would like to find out, I was unfortunately not here at the meeting last, last time, going to a funeral of another, another first responder, but is there a public mandate? Is there an elevation in crime to justify this extra line? We're talking about at a 10-person police force, you're talking about an additional person plus it's a detective, so if you follow virtually any other police force, the detective is going to be paid at a higher rate than the actual rate load of police officer. And of course, what are the alternatives? And the last thing, we just went over the budget. I love, I love terminology. One of the things was the reconnaissance level peer assessment. I don't know what that means. I don't think anybody here knows what that means. We still don't have any input on the taxpayer, from the taxpayers, about what we want to do for the peer, what we want to do with the peer. We want to turn, turn, tear the peer down, if we want to build it up, if we want to fix it, if we want to do anything. We send out a water bill every single month. Let's ask the taxpayers, and only the taxpayers, and get rid of the noise from the people from the other side of the bridge that aren't going to be paying for this, that aren't going to be paying for another police officer, that aren't going to be paying for the peer. And we should find out what they want, and then as, as servant leadership, as I hope that you all are, you will follow what the town wants you to do and then do it, and implement the policies in the fairest, most reasonable way possible. Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Lisa Ragland at 115 Salisbury Street. In regards to the proposed budget, I'm also in support of what was originally presented to the board. I feel that a detective is necessary with the county of Brunswick growing at the fastest rate of any county in the state of North Carolina. We should be proactive rather than reactive. I've seen the stats regarding the crime rates, and I've seen the emails that are attacking the fact that we don't need a detective, but that's not the case. You have got to protect the properties, the property owners, and the property owner's guests before the population growth continues to rise, because unfortunately statistically, population growth yields more criminal activity, and we are a target for that without having somebody on staff to be able to investigate it. I personally know many people that live on the island who have had to file police reports and have needed the services of a detective, and those services were not available. So, I do think we need to add the detective back to the budget. I also wanted to put in perspective what a 3.2 percent cost of living adjustment is for these folks. On a $40,000 salary, that's $1,280 a year. At 52 weeks a year, that is $24. And if y'all are like me, and you go to the grocery store once or twice a week, you're going to spend a heck of a lot more than $24 extra on your groceries. So, the cost of living adjustment is not enough for these staff members to continue doing their jobs and provide for their families, so I recommend that we keep the merit allowance there at the 5%. Finally, I wasn't prepared to say this, but in response to Jim Bauer's debt assessment, last time I checked, the town of Holden Beach has a legal debt margin of almost $100 million. We are at 3% of that, so we are doing just fine, and I am grateful for what you guys do, and I hope that you make the appropriate votes tonight to protect us and our taxpayers. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I also want to talk about the budget. Three points, I did send in my written comments, but I wanted to enhance those a little bit since I did get a response back to, to some of those, which I didn't agree with, of course. First of all, I'd like to say it's wonderful that the town of Holden Beach is in the financial situation that we're currently in. The budget reflects that we have a surplus contrary to the information that has been shared to the public. However, that surplus does have to be guarded, though. We need to look at that very carefully, because we do have a lot of projects that are going to have to be addressed in the near future that are not currently budgeted for. Stormwater recommendations, extra needed for the lift station that we're going to have to be doing. We've got some grant money, but it's, it'll probably take more than that. Recommendations from the water study that hasn't been completed yet. What are we going to do about Block Q and other, other than just restrooms? What are we going to do about pavilion that's been torn down? What are we going to do about bike trailer parking and additional car parking? What are we going to do about addressing the needs of the power station? Peer project, we don't know what we're going to do there. And just general maintenance of items in general, the list goes on and on. Given all these projects, I don't think now's the time to lower the tax rate by one cent and then have to turn around and raise the tax again in the very near future. Why? Just to say we lowered the tax rate? I mean, you know, I just don't see that. That's pretty apathetic, in my opinion. A one-cent tax reduction would result in a very small savings to the taxpayers at Holden Beach. For example, a property value of $1 million, I think somebody already said it, you're talking about saving $100 a year. I think, like myself and most other taxpayers, we'd say just keep it. Take care of it, take care of the items that need to be addressed by the town, so the town can continue to move forward in a very positive manner. Enough said about that. Secondly, the chief of police has expressed that his department needs a detective, and I think you should trust your chief of police and the department head's recommendation and the manager's recommendation, and leave the detective position in there along with the associated costs, as it was initially proposed in the... the associated costs as it was initially proposed in the budget. I think you've received enough commentary regarding this item that you should honor the wishes of the taxpayers of Holden Beach. And last, I do think also that the staff of Holden Beach work extremely hard, and a lot of these, I see workers, they're doing the jobs of multiple people, and I think you should support them, and I think you should reward them, because they're deserving of a merit increase. Hiring and retaining staff in today's world is extremely difficult if you try to do any hiring, and we need to keep the ones that we have. 5% was proposed for the merit increase. If you can't get that high, at least go higher than 1.8. Therefore, I would recommend that you adjust the proposed budget to increase the merit increase. And even with these three recommendations, you still have three, if you went along with these three recommendations, you still had a balanced budget, and you also had additional funds that could have been appropriated or left in the general fund as they were needed, and also you still have surpluses in your REFR and your water sewer plants. So I don't buy the argument that somebody says, you know, "Sky's not falling, sky's not falling." Now, I realize that the detective showed that as his fourth priority in his budget, but get real, he's got to have radios, and he's only following the vehicle policy for the town, so vehicles need to be replaced, and we accepted those Humvees, and so we got to put the insignia of the county of Holden Beach on them. So those were given, so really, his detective was really first place.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Will Carter, 108 Starfish Drive. I see this, how we're talking about money. I talked to about three people in Raleigh yesterday about the money for pier and the legislature, and the legislature's going to end up in, on July the 1st, there are between $500 and $900 million that we're arguing over right now, so it looks like the legislature's going to shut down. I was told by our representative Charlie Miller yesterday that, he said, "Will, you know," he says, "One thing I still haven't got is the little letter from the town saying, 'Charlie, would you see if you could find us some money for the pier?'" I'm pretty sure that Paige and Rick would be for asking Charlie for some money for the pier. I'm pretty sure Alan would sign the bottom of it and present it. So pretty much it's up to our mayor, Pro Tim, to write a letter and ask for some money for the pier. And because that letter has not been sent, our representatives cannot ask for it. And so pretty much everything lays on you, Mayor Pro Tim, to ask the city council or commissioners to write a letter to our representative, we are the representative of the government, and ask them to, whether we did the parkers plan or repair anything up there, they can't do anything if we don't ask. And I've told you several times before, or asked you several times before, to please write that letter and have the commissioners kill us with a majority, and then they can find us some money. Thank you very much, and that would help out the board a lot. Andrew P. Dill.
Anyone else want to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Regina Martin, 1032 Ocean Boulevard West. I want to stress to all of you, not just the commissioners, the excellent job that our staff here at our town, our small, little community that we all love to live in, what a great job they do, multi-passing this, multi-passing that, and taking care of all of us. When our police chief asks you for a detective, he needs a detective. You know, he doesn't need a patrol officer. He needs a detective, and we all need a detective, all of us that live here on a full-time basis with the way that community is growing. And we had a time years ago where we had a lot of vandalism when all the drugs and things were going on here. Well, they haven't stopped. We just happen to have a really good police force, and we should be proud of it, and we should fund their detective. We should go back to the original budget that was out there. We should fund them, we should give the merit increase that was proposed, because we have employees that can't afford to feed their families because we pay them and so forth, and that's the reason we can't hire people. I have trouble hiring people, too, and I pay my people really well, but it's still hard to hire them. So I think it's a real disgrace that we should have people that actually work for our town that have to go get assistance in order to feed their families. So we're talking about a small, a little bit of money here for a merit increase. You all want to cut taxes. Do you know that one little penny doesn't mean a hill of beans to any of us? You know, I don't even know exactly what it would mean to me, but I understand that $1 million is about $100. $3 million is 300. If you own a $3 million house and you can't afford to pay 300 more in taxes, then you've got a big problem. So let's go back to our original budget, let's fund our employees, let's try to take better care of them, let's respect them, and I understand there are those that feel that that is, they don't do as good a job as maybe I do. But I believe most of the people in this audience agree that our staff is stellar. I'd put them up against anybody else in this county or any other state. Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak? Yes.
First, I'd like to thank the commissioners and the town staff especially for their diligent and thorough budget workshops and meetings. While I may disagree with some of the decisions, I was fine with keeping the tax rate as is, 14, but I also commend you on the budget process and working through things. And part of the budget process is everybody asks for the best, you know, I did a lot of budgets, everybody asks for what they want, what the absolutely best-case scenario, and during the budget process, you go through and you check some balances, what's going to happen. I've looked through all the details for the detective, and I, you know, I just don't, but I'm not a police officer, and I know that if we, a lot of people think we need one, I just haven't seen the data that shows we need somebody full-time, and I'd love if the board could take a look at some of the alternatives, that we could maybe, maybe get part-time detective work. I know that, I listened to the Brunswick County budget meetings, and they, you know, the money that they got for their police staff, that was a lot of hard negotiations. They didn't get everything they wanted either, and that's not the purpose of a budget, to give everybody everything they want. There's got to be checks and balances. But I do want to say that you guys did a great job. I know it was a lot of work, and like I said, while I may disagree with a few of your decisions, I hope that you take this process going forward, take what you've learned, and continue to refine and improve it while listening to your constituents and everybody, not just the people in this room, but the people who are online, other homeowners that couldn't be here tonight, and find a way to work more harmoniously with one another. Everybody here loves Holden Beach, and we all need to find common ground and work together for the betterment of our town and our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak about the budget? Last call.
Can we make comment? No?
Yep. All right. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Sally Caldwell, 121 South Shore Drive, and this is about the budget, but it starts back with all these budget meetings, which some of the people could not come, but at first, when you announced the budget meetings, it was noted that there would be no decisions, you know, till you got to this meeting with the budgets about what to do. So the August 12th meeting, two commissioners decided to take the police chief, the detective, out of the budget, which I don't think that was, they should have done that, they should have waited till this meeting to talk about it, because, you know, hopefully we'll get to the budget meeting and the regular meeting, and something else can be done. But I think we need to, if you say you're going to do something, you need to follow those things that you say you're going to do.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Another last call. All right. Commissioners and audience, we're going to declare the public hearings over, and we will proceed and call the meeting, regular meeting, to order. And that being so, we will begin with item number one on the proposed agenda, and that is an invocation. Let's take a moment of silence and reflection, please. Thank you very, very much, and we will officially call the meeting to order, and welcome to all of you that are present and those that are listening in on our activity tonight. And item number three, let's pledge allegiance to our flag to my right, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Number four, consideration of approving the proposed agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Actually, I'd like to make a motion to amend it. I'd like to move item 16 to right after item eight. That's the possible selection of the town attorney. Like to move that up to after McGill does their presentation. That's a motion.
A second. You said that was under number eight?
Yes. Move 16.
8A. So it's going to be 8A?
Sure.
So we have a motion. The motion, restating the motion was to move 16 to 8A? Okay, was the motion inclusive of approving the agenda otherwise, or just simply the move?
Sure, we can, we can approve the, make a motion to approve it.
As amended?
As amended, yes. Thank you.
Okay, we need, and you're second in that? Okay, is there any discussion?
I just, what is the reasoning for, what is the reasoning for the move? Is there a particular reason?
I just feel it would be a more appropriate place to have it at this point.
Who approved the agenda as it's presented?
No one. I made my motion first to amend it.
Who brought this to the board? Madam Clerk, did you prepare the agenda? Who prepared the agenda?
It's my agenda item.
Okay. All right. Any more discussion? You ready to vote? All in favor of approving the amended agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. For those that are listening and in the room, number 16 is now 8A, fall in between number eight and number nine on the agenda presented originally. All right, so we're going to move forward. We're on number five, conflict of interest. Madam Clerk?
Part six, Rule 13E of the 2024 Rules of Procedure requires members to disclose any potential conflicts of interest. Please state if you have any potential conflicts. Mayor Holden?
No.
Mayor Pro Tim Myers?
No conflict.
Commissioner Smith?
No conflict.
Commissioner Thomas?
No conflict.
Commissioner Guyer?
No conflict.
And Commissioner Parkett?
No conflict.
Okay, that being completed, let's look at number six on the agenda, approval, consideration of approving the minutes of May 2, May 21, May 29, and June 3. Is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor, I have a correction, if I may.
All right.
On the May 2 minutes, and these are minor things, page one at the bottom, the town manager said it would take to May before he can deliver the budget message. I think that should have been June, just to make the record correct.
No, I think you'd look at it May 29, didn't you?
Well, he said it would be close to May, and then we were in May, so if I'm incorrect, that's fine. It just seems like close to June was the right word.
You want to speak to that, Mr. Yud?
I don't know what I said. Well, I may have very well said May.
I could change it to close to the end of May.
You said it would be after the holiday.
It was after.
Yeah, because we were kind of like, "In May, not a big deal."
Anything else?
I guess I'm being too nitty. I apologize for that. Thank you, that's it.
All right, so Madam Clerk, you proposing to write what in that?
The end of May.
End of May. Everybody understand the proposed correction? Anything else? If not, all in favor, say aye of the amended.
Well, we didn't make a motion, did we? Motion to approve the minutes as amended.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, let's try it again. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The minutes stand, all four sets of minutes stand approved with the correction as noted. Number seven, public comments on agenda items. I have a list here, and the first name on the list, James Bauer.
James Bauer, 329 Ocean Boulevard West. The selling of 396 OBW. Hooray. Finally. Great. But once again, I was in the last meeting, I heard that we're taking an offer of $300,000. Am I right, am I wrong?
That's the first bid.
Okay, well, I think what might not be a bad idea in order to, in order to get the maximum amount of return from our purchase would be, in order to keep this as a closed bidding process, is to do what everyone would normally do, which would be to put this up for sale publicly, even if it's just done on the courthouse steps, which is what pretty much every municipality does in the United States. I think we can make a lot more money on the, on the sale, and I, but I do applaud the concept of it. It's going to get it back on the tax rolls off of our insurance, and I think that's a fantastic thing, and I applaud the board for doing this. Thank you.
Hello, once again, I'm Maria Surprise, 159 Ocean Boulevard East. This is regarding agenda item 18. I strongly encourage the Board of Commissioners to work with Chief Dixon and Chief Todd to implement a solution that keeps the emergency beach access points clear of obstructions, not only for public safety, but for the safety of our first responders. And then regarding agenda item 19, I encourage all of you guys sitting in this room, those of you online, please consider applying to fill one of the vacancies on the various town boards. According to the meeting packet, there are nine vacancies to be filled, two on the Board of Adjustment, six on planning and zoning, and one on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Serving on one of these advisory boards is a great way to get involved in our town's government, as well as give back to our beloved community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Regina Martin, 1032 Ocean Boulevard West. I said most of what I wanted to say the first time I came up about the budget. I still believe that you should go back to your original budget. It was a balanced budget. It funded the things that the town needs, which is the detective, and the employees need the salary increases. I would like to say, a lot of our board are corporate people. I've always been self-employed and owned businesses, so I'm not in the corporate world, but my husband is, or was. And I remember, we always looked forward to review time. And I remember, we always looked forward to review time, because that's when we got our rates. We got our regular rate, and then we got a merit increase. I'd like to remind you all that more than likely, you all look forward to those times too. And these employees all look forward to that as well. So I encourage you to please go back and look at what you have done, and please undo what you did last week and fix it.
Thank you, ma'am. Sylvia Pate? You're good, okay. Lisa Ragland?
All right, Lisa Ragland again, one fifteen Salisbury. Two quick things. Number sixteen, in regards to the attorney for the town. I was not here for the interviews, but I did go back and watch those interviews. And what I noted is that our interim attorney is not as qualified to serve local government clients as the other law firms that submitted proposals. There was an admission of lack of qualification and the need for special counsel in various instances. So in my professional experience, because I deal with attorneys all the time, I've determined you get what you pay for. And I feel that the proposal received from the borough law firm would be the most acceptable for the town. The reasoning that I chose them personally as my recommendation would be based on their documented experience with local governments, combined with the fact that their hourly rates are competitive, they're flexible based on the need for service, if it's a legal assistant, senior counsel, or a general attorney. And it's important to note that one of the attorneys owns property in Brunswick County in Sunset Beach, so they do have a local tie to the community. Whereas the other proposal received didn't have any local ties to the community. So, and their rate was a flat rate, and I felt like it was probably too expensive for the budget size of our town. So that's number sixteen. And then number seventeen, I have been in support of the town selling seven ninety-six OBW. I do think that the initial offer that's been received is considerably low based on our market value for comparable properties in our area. So if you do vote to accept that and open that upset bid period up, I will tell you, as a local Realtor, I'm gonna try to get you some more bids. So I do, I do hope that we get some more interest in that first ten-day period to get that value up, 'cause that's considerably low for what we could sell that thing for. But if you choose not to proceed with that, I'm with Bauer on this one. I do think opening that up, you know, submitting an RFP for agents to give you their, you know, market value opinions and their suite of services could help the town make more money. So either way, you know, obviously, that's your call. If you think the upset bid period is, or process is gonna be beneficial to the town, I support your judgment. I'll do my best to help with that. But thank you, guys.
Thank you. Mr. Finley? Mr. Finley?
No, mine was during the budget.
Okay. All right, did I miss anyone? That's all the names.
I was your aftername.
Sir?
I said I got your aftername, but the.
Y'all gonna allow him to speak?
May I allow him to, may I? May I give one up and speak?
Yes, sir. Come forth, give us your name and where you live.
Will Carter, still at one oh eight Starfish Drive. I live across the street from the fire station. We've talked a lot about the fire station being able to house people overnight, and that's all good, all good and well. But I've stood there and need to eat water several times in that place. I've talked to Chief Ward about the situation. The unit has to be within five miles from the end of the beach. The only property that will suffice for that is the corner of Greensboro Street and Ocean Boulevard West, where the sewer pump station is. The town owns the lots all the way from the corner of Greensboro up to the two houses that are built. I talked to Jonathan Howell up in New Bern today, and I talked to NC State, which owns the property that abuts the backside of Holden Beach's properties there. I talked to Jonathan and talked about putting a bulkhead in to stretch that land down into the marshes a little bit for the emergency services. He said it's possible to do that. So he's got Patrick. Patrick's gonna give me a call about doing that. And we could bulkhead from the two houses that are built over to Greensboro Street, fill that land in a foot higher than Ocean Boulevard, and give Chief Todd and the Tribeach Volunteer Fire Department, of which David put me, David put me in charge of basketball goals over a decade ago. And Alan see me, see me over there, helped get the concrete right in front of that. I've had a lot of time at that building. My son's been a volunteer fireman. He started over ten years ago. And I've got a lot of, lot of need for the fire department to be here. Not only do they put out fires, and I've stood out there and helped them, but they take care of the older people that are here on the beach, and they need access. As far as the fire station that's existing, I've talked to Chris here. He needs a place on the beach to store his equipment and do, and so he doesn't have to go all the way over across the causeway every time he's gotta bring a piece of equipment onboard. We talked about it the other day while the electrician was down there looking at it. But he could certainly use that building. So rather than take down a good building, I feel as though it's in the town's best interest to look into putting this bulkhead around there, filling that area, creating a nice building there for the Tribeach Fire Department. The generator could run the fire department and the sewer substation. And we already have a lot of the infrastructure right there. So if we create the lot, then I believe we can get funding to build a decent fire station. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, again, did we miss anybody? All right, we're gonna declare the public comment period over with and move to number eight on the agenda. And Ms. Hewitt, you wanna say anything about that? Before Mr. Clemens takes over?
No, I don't.
Mr. Clemens, you have the floor. Give. There you go. All right.
Well, I'm gonna be right here just to hold you short there, but a little bit of background, it's past year. I entered the contract with McGill and Associates to help develop the Stormwater Master Plan. And Michael Morton and McGill and Michael Hansen there are asked here to give you a presentation and thoughts of that before. And without further ado, fight me over this, Mike. I'm gonna put up a real big fight, and I'll let you have it.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Board. I appreciate the opportunity to summarize the duration of the Stormwater Master Plan study, development that we've worked diligently with. Hopefully, you'll see so too in the report. And appreciations to Chris and his staff for all of the support they gave us, particularly in the field, and for Mr. Hewitt, and Tim and Christie as well, through all of the dialogue and the meetings and that we had, both regarding specific town and project items, as well as the interactions with the Corps of Engineers during that process as we were marrying the plans to try to also ensure that the Corps of Engineers, in that representative mode, as they were looking at budget line items and support for such projects, were fully aware of the needs of the town, particularly in the top or key items, as I would say, that we'll address as the top six. Five of those were in that discussion as well. So I'm going to shift down to the next line item here on the agenda. As I mentioned, Michael Hansen and myself, Michael, we'll both, we'll both sort of tag-team the presentation a little bit, and then at the end, hold a time for any questions you may have, any items of clarity that you may have observed in the report or things that you want us to address further. The slide that's on the screen is the project background, which is a bulleted summary, really, of the scope and those things that we were focusing on as part of the agreement with the town and as part of the town interests that were expressed to us, the inventory and assessment part of the existing conditions, those things that were in place that the town had, and also the existing infrastructure, taking a look at those items. We'll look at that a little further in the next slide. The survey and analysis, modeling, evaluations of alternatives for those key areas of concern on the island. We dove deeper into those areas, those specific hot areas. You'll see them on some mapping in a little bit. Hansen will show those to you. So we dove deeper into those areas. GIS system inventory map and other mapping to identify flood-prone areas. This is where we intended and bought in all of the analysis and data into a GIS database for overlay on the existing GIS database that Chris and his team have for sewers. So it allows that overlay and allows them to see the assets real-time, to be able to access those, modify those over time, and adjust so that they can maintain inventory, understand what's in the field and the components, details of that. Also, we were asked to consider the feasibility of a stormwater utility to address current and future stormwater management needs, to discuss what we have seen or see in the way of that in utilities. You know, even on the coast, we looked at a few of those. Michael will mention some of those and what we discovered there and some of the assessment and input for that. And then finally, the Stormwater Management Plan itself as a compilation of the study findings and summaries and the mappings and those things, which hopefully will serve as a guide and a place to go to for reference and information, and a guide in your capital improvement planning for stormwater management projects. Next slide is just a little dig into the inventory and assessment and what took place in that particular area of the scope. Again, I mentioned the existing records and data collection review. There was some level of mapping that the town had, a past study or plan that had some current assets, basins, piping networks and things. So we were able to utilize some of that existing information. And then Mr. Clemens and his staff supplemented that with their own field reconnaissance verification on the front end, uncovering, finding some things that are on the map and needed to be revealed to us so that we could get survey data and field collection data on them, so. And also, you know, North Carolina Flood Plane Mapping System, some of the information on that overall mapping that you will see later comes from some GIS and database sources, state sources of that nature. The data collection and GIS mapping that was primarily used, LIDAR, I'll let Mr. Hansen discuss more in detail of that, because we looked at that broadly over the entire island, where the next item you see, field surveying, we use predominantly in those key areas of concern and on those infrastructure points where we had piping or basins or outfalls or things where we wanted to gather very specific data. And then particularly in those areas of concern, because the intent in those areas was to move those potential projects forward at a greater level, not to a design level, but to a preliminary level that at least gave some alternatives and suggestions that could move forward into design projects. And closed caption, the CCTV and the pipe inspections and cleaning go simultaneously and kind of hand-in-hand. The intent was to look at those outfalls, the half a dozen or so that are on the island, and try to as best we could, and even in some of the other piping systems, get cameras and visuals of interiors to determine pipe integrity, locations of boxes or junctions or features that were not obvious from the ground level. So there was some level of that attempted and produced, and some level, obviously, as you might imagine, revealed some buildup over time of sediment, debris, rocks, and other things that are in the system that will need some, you know, longer-term maintenance, clean-out, and routine repair to keep them in an order that helps move water more freely. So those were part of some of the inventory assessment items. I'm gonna let Mr. Hansen dig in deeper on the key areas of concern. I mentioned five key ones. We started out with three, ended up roughly five areas of concern that were predominant in our investigation. To go a little further in that preliminary assessment, that doesn't say these are the only problems on the island, as you well know if you live here. And hopefully, you'll see from the heat maps and things that were generated, those other hotspots where there are targeted influences by rain events and/or tidal events, where if you look at those, you'll say, yes. Hopefully, you'll see where it identifies those areas that at least topographically reveal where there should be evidence of flooding that ideally would be addressed with future projects. So I'm gonna let Mr. Michael take over from here.
Thank you, Michael. Appreciate the opportunity, the Board, members of the staff, as well as all the public that's here, for us to bring this to your attention. Hopefully, you will find it to be a valuable tool as you move forward, planning for the future of your community. As we look at areas of concern, the primary tasks that we're looking at there was an analysis of existing drainage system, the two- and ten-year storm, identification of deficiencies in the existing network, evaluation of available alternatives that would provide remedy, in some cases, a complete remedy, in other cases, a partial remedy to the existing flooding problem that was identified, develop probable estimates of construction costs for each alternative. And then also, throughout the, I guess, the process that we're going through, the town identified an opportunity for potential participation in a fifty-one thirteen environmental infrastructure assistance grant through U.S. Army Corps. So we did shift a little bit of our activities during that development time into supporting some additional requests of information that they were looking for to support their further evaluation of the projects. To look forward at each one of the six areas, five of these areas were the five projects that were brought forward to the fifty-one thirteen grant, potentially. And then there's a sixth area that we were requested to look at by staff and provide recommendations as part of this report. I am showing examples of imagery that is included in the Stormwater Master Plan. We have existing conditions, maps that show existing flooding that's occurring in these areas, as well as proposed alternative maps. And in each case, we're showing the change in flooding that may occur from both the two-year and the ten-year event. The two-year event on this particular image is shown in the lighter blue shading. And the ten-year event is the area of flooding that's shown in the darker blue shading. I wanna draw your attention to the legend on the right side. It shows what all of the different symbology is on the page, where the swales are indicated, where the pipelines, new pipelines, new catch basins are indicated. These are consistent with all of the maps that we've provided. And in this case, for area one, we actually have a phased alternative that was considered, because the two areas that are shown in the teal outline are existing properties that are actually part of the dedicated right-of-way that is part of the town. And we had suggested the opportunity to potentially utilize those properties for the purposes of assisting with stormwater management. The image in the top right of that shows basically a shallow swale or detention area that could be done as part of the Phase One operation. And then if, at some point in the future, the town determined that they needed to actually use that right-of-way for the purposes of parking or conveyance of traffic, which right-of-ways are typically utilized for, then we also looked at an alternative for Phase Two, which would take that same area and allow for the filling and utilization of that area for pavement, parking, or whatever the purpose it's intended for, and then putting that storage basically underground in vaults or domed storage, which is a very typical way of providing attenuation for stormwater on sites that needed, need to serve an additional second purpose. You see these very frequently in parking lots for new development or shops and things of that sort. So we wanted to show that there was a feasible alternative for being able to utilize the property for its intended purpose as right-of-way and still provide some benefit for overall flood reduction in the area. overall flood reduction in the area. Going on to area two, this is, I'm sorry, the prior area was at the 300 block of OBW. This next area is the area at Mullet and East End by Avenue A. The project was proposed to provide beneficial reduction of flooding along the OBE section of roadway that is adjacent to the dune area adjacent on the beach and extending from there down towards Mullet. The main reason for the connection to Mullet Drive is that there is an existing outfall to the free waters at Mullet. So we were looking at extending the stormwater system further along OBE, capturing and allowing for a positive discharge of drainage over to the Mullet outfall system. The benefit here is that while we still have 10-year and 2-year flooding shown in a portion of the area, we're able to basically reduce or eliminate most of the flooding that's occurring on the roadway. As we go to area three, this is an area at the west end of OBW. This is an area that where the road is actually depressed based on adjacent areas and it's an area of frequent flooding that causes both emergency access as well as utility access problems during those flood events. So in this case, based on the work that we had done to try and find a reasonably sized and priced solution, we were able to put in a collection system to reduce the overall depth of flooding for the two-year, making the road passable, at least for emergency utility services. We had also not identified a specific location of outfall at this location. As of this time, we identified basically a zone where we believe that the outfall would be most beneficial. If the town wants to proceed with this project, they'll need to coordinate with the adjacent property owners to identify whether or not any of them are willing to participate in the project. As we move away from that zone, the reason that we identified it the way we did was that we'll end up with a reduction in the benefit of the project or we'll have to increase the size of the piping and the collection system to overcome the fact that we're requiring the water to flow additional distance before discharge. Area four, 760 block of OBW, similar area where we've got roadway flooding. And in this case, we did identify a potential outfall that was beyond the limits of the privately held property in the area. Likewise to the prior area, the benefit of trying to discharge through properties that are immediately adjacent to the area of flooding is greater, but there is an alternative that would not impact adjacent private properties. So we looked at both alternatives here. On area five, this is Carolina Avenue. We have an area of flooding that actually is persistent along kind of the midsection of Carolina Avenue. It's an area that's a depressional area, isolated where water just accumulates from rainfall. So we're looking at putting in an inlet and then conveying that water through the high spot and out to the existing boat ramp. Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the park. And here, the proposed system, we were able to come up with a solution that provided total benefit both for the two-year and the 10-year rainfall event and reduced or eliminated flooding in that area. And one thing that I would note about this particular area that's unique is that we have a proposed new outfall in this location. So there is a, I guess, another item that comes along with that. In areas where we have proposed new outfalls, we also anticipate the need for doing a can of major permit. We're able to utilize existing outfalls, we don't have to go through that process. So that adds both time and money to the overall project if we have to go to a new outfall. And it also, each new outfall is evaluated on a case by case basis. So there may be additional items that would be added to the project as part of obtaining that permit, such as putting in sediment barriers or other types of water quality treatment devices. We'd have to evaluate that at the time of design with the permit agencies to determine what they would require for that. And the last project is actually a project that was added in overall. This is the one project that is not part of the 5113 grant that I discussed earlier. It is a local erosion issue that the town staff wanted to get addressed. So we did include this as one of the evaluations. And you'll notice we go to the overall cost of these projects, that this project has significantly lesser cost because we're not putting in a lot of infrastructure. It's simply trying to provide some benefits for reducing current erosion in this small All right, with the probable construction cost estimate, just show this as an example. With the estimate, we went through and provided a range of costs, wanting to both represent what we believe to be the current construction cost based on an itemized evaluation and remembering that all these projects are at conceptual level at this point. So there's further evaluation, further design detail that needs to be incorporated into this overall process to try and account for that further detail. The items at the bottom would add in a contingency as well as a price escalation factor, which is a very prominent issue in the construction industry post-COVID. Prices are going up on an unusually tended basis, both on material as well as label shortages. So that's why we'll be showing in our next slide, a range of costs for each one of these As we go to the selected alternatives, each project area is listed there by number as well as name. Selected alternative is noted there. That provides a little bit more benefit when you're looking at the full report where you see how each alternative was developed and how the cost for each alternative was developed and then looking at them, looking at the overall benefit as well as the cost to achieve that benefit. We then made a recommendation for what we believe to be the appropriate selected alternative and coordinated with staff on that also. The cost estimate as shown on the right, again, the ranges for each project. Project six at the bottom, the Davis Street, you can see is an order of magnitude less than each of the other projects because of its small, isolated area and limited infrastructure that we needed to improve that area. Overall totals, which I apologize if I didn't have it up on the slide, ranging from, on the low end from 1.9 million to the higher end of 2.9 million for the total project cost. So not insignificant in the overall scheme of things, especially when tonight's meeting is all about budget up until now. Other problem areas, as Mr. Norton had referenced earlier, we did do an evaluation of the entire island as well as these individual problem areas. The individual problem areas, we had detailed survey where we went out and actually pulled survey grade elevations on all the pipes, all the swales, dimensions, et cetera, for the collection system. In the areas outside of that, because working within the overall budget limits that we had on the project, we utilized LIDAR. LIDAR is a digital product available through North Carolina Flood Mapping statewide and it provides generally an accuracy of between one and two foot on contours, whereas your survey grade is at 0.1 centimeter. So significant difference in overall accuracy, but still provides an overall benefit for trying to look and assess a larger area and understand some of the problems that persist in those areas that did not, were not identified as areas of concern, therefore we didn't have the additional survey grade. The heat map, this again is an example. We have heat maps that show a panel across the entire island. And in general, the area along the coastline on the top there for the Intercoast Waterway is an area that is shown for the, what we were looking at as sunny day tidal flooding. That's typically associated with the mean high or high water or the king tide. And we're looking at what that king tide elevation typically is, mapping that against the coastline. We also, in those areas where we had significant conveyances inland to portions of the island, we didn't map into the king tide into the other areas of the island where we had sufficient detail to identify that. And as I said, we refer to that as sunny day flooding, so it's non-rain event flooding that would likely occur in these areas. The areas that are shown inland in the different varying colors from the light blue to the red are pockets of isolated areas that are depressional and they don't have an existing outfall or the existing outfall isn't sufficient to convey the water away at the frequency that the rain was, intensity of the rain was falling from the two-year, 10-year event. So again, across the entire island, we've identified these isolated areas where we anticipate you're going to see localized flooding during either a two-year or 10-year event. As Michael mentioned earlier, these are areas where we had suggested that outside of the areas of concern, opportunities for other projects that the town may consider in future years. Stormwater utility feasibility assessment, this is basically a summary of what we were asked to evaluate, again, from our scope of services. We're looking at a conceptual evaluation of establishing the stormwater utility for the purposes of both addressing the cost of the capital improvement projects that we just got done looking at, as well as other things that staff felt were, would be beneficial like improved maintenance, a sinking fund for additional equipment purchases that would occur over time, development of rate studies to establish the appropriate rates that will meet all of the criteria and meet the needs of the community as we move forward through the next several years if you were to implement a utility, as well as looking at ordinance and policy development, changes that may be needed, again, as you work through the future and development continues to change, sometimes policies need to change along with With that, the storm utility feasibility assessment, I'm simplifying things here for the purposes of our discussion tonight. There's a lot more detail provided in the report, but essentially, a stormwater utility is an enterprise fund. It's just like a utility that would be for water or a utility that would be for sewer. There are specific services that are being provided and there's a specific cost associated with those services. In any stormwater utility or any utility that's an enterprise fund, you typically look to try and balance out the revenue that's generated by the fund with the expenses of both running the fund itself as well as all of the other services that you're trying to offset the cost of. So I have a running list there. Again, those are similar to the list on the previous page. I do want to point out at the bottom, one of the things that we typically look at when we're looking at feasibility for a stormwater utility is a managed fund balance that has a minimum of a 90-day cash on hand. That is a general measure of the health of the utility itself. If you run inside that 90-day limit, then you have a chance of running out of the funding available to cover the costs that you anticipate will occur within that time period. That 90 days is a general rule of thumb that's utilized for enterprise funds to determine whether or not there's state. As we move forward to the actual evaluation itself, we looked at two different alternatives. One is assuming that the 100% of the capital cost of the five projects that we discussed, or actually the six with the erosion project, were funded by the stormwater utility as well as all the administrative costs and other things that I mentioned earlier. Scenario B would be if the town were successful in acquiring some or all of the funding that might be available through the 5113 grant. And there, there's a potential for acquiring up to 75% of the five projects that were submitted to them. And obviously, that would be a significant cost reduction in overall capital cost. All of the administration costs, the long-term maintenance, the equipment purchases, none of that changes. So there is a slight change in the overall valuation for what a suggested rate would be between scenario A and scenario B. And while here on the screen, I'm showing a five-year evaluation, within the report, we actually take that up to 10 years, again, just to test the viability and make sure that we're maintaining that 90-day minimum cash on hand. So with scenario A, we're looking at about a $7.20 flat fee. With scenario B, we're looking at the $5.30 flat fee. And that will be a monthly charge on each parcel on the island. The basis of that is that each parcel generates stormwater runoff that has to be managed by the town. So everyone contributes to the benefits that are derived, even though the benefits may be spread out and localized in specific areas, there is an overall benefit to the entire community from the other aspects of the stormwater utility, like the ongoing maintenance, the operations, personnel costs, those types of things. So with those two alternatives, we did also make a comparison to four local communities that have stormwater utilities now, that are all beach communities within about a 30-mile radius of here. We found that there was an average of those four communities, their rate was 1176. So in either case, scenario A or scenario B, we're looking at a lower rate than a comparison rate of your neighboring communities. Those are all flat fees. If you go to areas that are, have more established and sophisticated utilities like City of Raleigh or Charlotte, you'll see like a tiered scale of fees that are paid based on total limited, total area of the project, total impurvious area, whether or not it's industrial or residential, a number of different factors come into play when you look at a more elaborate structure for your utility. In the case of what we were looking at here, based on coordination with staff, we felt like looking at the simplest administrative structure would allow for the least amount of administrative cost and allow for the majority of the utility fund to go towards the implementation of the capital projects and the ongoing maintenance that were the key issues that we're trying to address. So that's why we looked at dealing with that. Obviously, there's also an overall benefit to moving out if you're doing something initially in a simple manner rather than immediately jumping into something that's more complex. There's a number of other details that we covered with staff and that are covered in the report. If you have further questions, we'd be more than glad to address those also. So our recommendations on the stormwater utility feasibility, and I guess I want to first note that it's not our place to recommend whether or not you implement a utility. It's our place to say It's our place to say, if you were to implement a utility, and you want to try and utilize some mechanism to offset the cost of these projects, so that you're able to implement these projects and not pull from general revenue to do that, then our recommendation would be go to scenario A. It does have a slightly higher per month cost, but right now, we don't know what the outcome of the 5113 grant is. If you find that in the future, Army Corps is willing to participate with you in the implementation of some or all of those five projects, there's always an opportunity to go back in at that time and reassess what the initial rate needs to be changed to, to offset that third-party contribution of overall cash to implement those projects. So I think it's easier to start at the higher level and move down than it is to start at the lower level with the assumption that you're going to get something that you don't have control over now. And again, all of that is preference by saying, you know, if you choose to move in the direction of looking at a stormwater utility to fund these projects, this is our recommendation. With that, I will open it to questions for either myself or Michael.
Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Parkes?
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. It's a good report. Does this report take into account, and hopefully I can be heard, does this report take into account all the paving that we've recently done, the six inches of asphalt we put down, any other stormwater features that DOT may or may not have done? I don't know that they've actually added anything. But I think we've got, Chris, what, six inches of new asphalt out there, is that right?
That's correct. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't even find any, I didn't find my foot on the way.
Okay. Then, does it address the deletions?
Yeah.
I mean, is it current, is basically what I'm asking?
It is, it is current, and as part of our coordination with staff, we obtained the plans which at that time were yet to be implemented for the additional asphalt that was being brought in on OBE and OBW. And we also, during our survey, noted the structures, in most cases, I think, structures that were taken out were basically dead-end structures that basically dropped down into a cistern or an evacuation pipe that didn't really go to an outfall. So I don't think that that really had a significant impact.
Gotcha.
Overall, at least in the areas that we evaluated. But yes, the impervious area was included in the overall evaluation for the changes that occurred for the new pavement.
Do you have an idea of what the engineering costs would be to put together the bid packages for these? I know it's kind of a loaded question.
So what we typically do with the engineering costs, and I can give you a direct answer, but what I would like to say first is the contingency that we have valued in there, right now, the contingency is a 30% contingency. So we would hope that that would be inclusive of the engineering fees. We'd have to look at that at the time that you all decide to implement these projects, if that occurs later this year, or five years from now, obviously, that may change. The cost escalation for the overall value of the materials and labor costs and those types of things added on an additional 20%. So there's a significant range there, and I would feel like the overall estimates for construction, both the engineering fees permitting, as well as the construction management, should be able to be covered within those two, and still bring you in within the budgets we had, that we had indicated.
How challenging is it to get a major CAMA permit?
Michael, you might be able to answer that.
The challenge, the town, town obviously has gone, gone through this process as well, but we have, we have gone through major CAMA permitting. The challenge, most, or the most dominant challenge we see is related to the timing of it. So as might be the case for stormwater permitting, CAMA permitting takes time, major CAMA permitting takes more time. So that's the main difference for us. The CAMA guidelines and rules are, I don't want to say they're clear and straightforward relative to some level of understanding and correspondence with, with the regulators, we define those parameters at the forefront of any design. So we overcome those hurdles in the beginning, the challenges, and even the interactions we had during the process of these. The difficulty becomes in timing and budget relative to timing, grant funding relative to timing, and making sure that those, those permit, the durations for the permits are handled. So sometimes that takes months, and particularly if Division of Water Resources and/or the Corps of Engineers are also involved, you can get into months in the permitting processes. That tends to be the most challenging part of it.
Okay, so basically, it's feasible to get a permit. Do you see any technical reason why we wouldn't be able to get a permit? And I understand it may take up to a year.
Yeah, and the, the technical side of it, as Michael mentioned a minute ago, that, that relative to stormwater management, so when, when all parties see a CAMA major, so it opens us up to, to review by 14, 14 agencies, including Corps, Division of Water Resources, and other folks, so marine fisheries, North Carolina Wildlife. So there's, there's a number of entities that, that are brought to the table during that. We often recommend scoping meetings at the forefront with those agencies, and that's our typical process, to make sure that, that they and us, we have a full understanding of the project and the regulations that are, that are all involved. So that establishes the baseline needs for the, for the regulatory side and the parameters of it. The water quality was, was an example mentioned earlier. There may be a need on the stormwater side, or one of the other regulatory sides, to, to enhance water quality at the outfall section. So there may be a collection system that, that removes nutrient and/or sediment loading to a larger degree than is currently there. So we could get into some of those items that are requested and/or required as, as part of those, those individual projects. Some of that depends on, on location, where it is relative to primary nursery areas, outfall structures, there are a lot of variables, but yes, there could be, there could be design challenges related to the, the water quality treatment system that, you know, might be imposed, not necessarily, but it could be.
Do the treatment systems require maintenance? I would think so. If you're collecting sediment, you're going to have to dig them out.
Yes.
Some type of filtration, so it's going to...
Yes.
It's going to be, there's going to be a life cycle cost, was that kind of included when you looked at your utility model?
Yes, we tried to account for, for labor, personnel, staff, and maintenance, and those, those items as best we could at a preliminary level for each of the designs, just as we would have for the piping and catch basins and sediment intrusion that is in the current system that needs to be, needs to be managed. Yes, sir.
Last question. I know these are listed in one through six, but do you see which ones may be the best bang for the buck, so to speak, ones that we might want to look at first?
These, these hit the, the top of the list, as we call them. They were not, obviously, the only areas of concern on the island, but the original, original scope, I believe, started out with, with three, broadened to five key areas. With respect to the, to the prioritization as it relates to funding, and funding, that will affect in some cases, I think, how you prioritize. So for example, the funding that is, that is being sought out at Corps of Engineer level, and their evaluation of these projects independently and collectively, the ability to obtain funding for particular locations, areas, may help drive the, the priority. So I would think that would be a, that, on these particularly, if, if any or all are funded, that would, that would probably drive priority. I think each of these plays an important role in their specific area, and obviously, the size or the magnitude or impacts to the properties are different. You have multiple properties impacted by some, fewer properties perhaps impacted by others, so obviously, that, that could, could play a part too.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
Couple. I guess, building on the areas of concern, I saw in the back, you had maps of our Canal Street area, Marsh Canal, which showed a lot of flooding, which we've been experiencing where the marsh and the canals come over the bulkheads. Was that out of the scope of the analysis, or I just...
It was not an idea, it was not, I'm sorry, not an, an area that was identified as one of the six areas of concern at the initial outset of the project. When we were brought in after first being selected, we met with staff, we sat down and looked at the scope, evaluated what needed to be done related to the needs that they wanted to convey to us, and collectively determined that in addition to the three we had identified in our original scope, there were actually two others that they wanted addressed. So adjusted scope to make sure that we could accommodate all five of those, and that was not one of the areas that was brought forward as a, as a priority for the evaluation at this time.
Okay. And the maps, you talk about two-year, 10-year events that are shown, those are not two-year, 10-year hurricanes, right? They're just, or what are, what is a 10-year event?
Okay. So a, a two-year and 10-year event are typical rainfall events. And what I would say, to try and put it in, I guess, more general terms, a two-year event would be, it's essentially approximately four inches of rainfall that occurs within 24 hours. If you look at a 10-year event, you're getting upwards of five and a half, six inches of rainfall. So it's a measurement of the total rainfall that occurs within a 24-hour period, that's how you categorize those events, and those are taken from standards that are set by NOAA and, and other references that are typically used to evaluate the effectiveness of stormwater systems, collection and, collection systems. We are not specifically doing anything related to hurricanes, because once you get to a point where you've got washover coming from over the shoreline into the island, your stormwater systems are essentially ineffective at that point. The volume of water that's coming from a typical hurricane event is normally 12 to 15 inches or more. If you look at Florence, for instance, that was in excess of 25 inches of rainfall. So it's, it's orders of magnitude higher than what we were looking at for typical management of stormwater on the island, trying to address isolated flooding problems, recurring areas of flooding. Those were the things that we were asked to focus on, so that's what drove that need. In addition to that, the heat map I did mention, we looked at king tide, and that's a non, a non-rainfall flooding event. So that's when the hot, the top, that's the highest tide typically that you're going to see in a given year, and that's when that tide, that tide gets high enough to start to create backwater coming up your outfalls or up your adjacent channels, flooding, you know, local beach areas or up along your dock areas, just because of the tide itself, it has nothing to do with rainfall.
So that was just rain and tide, not, not storm surge, wind?
Correct, correct. So we, we looked at the king tide, non-rainfall event, and we looked at the two-year and the 10-year rainfall event.
Okay.
Those are the things that we were asked to focus on. And again, that was in discussions with town staff, when we initially kicked off the project, we asked, what is the level of service that you want to try and provide? And again, recognizing that we're looking primarily at roadways as the, as the area of major concern for public access.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
Yes, sir, Mr. Parkes.
I apologize, I lied, I've got one more. Do you think tide gates could be feasible on the canal outfalls? Because we get flooding a lot of times at high tides where the, it doesn't necessarily come over the bulkheads, but our outfalls become supply lines.
Yes. So you will note with each one of the projects that we have recommended, either on an existing outfall or a new outfall, one of the elements that we've included in that design is a tide gate. So we believe in tide gates, they address king tide very effectively. The key is, you make sure that you're, when you're moving down the path of doing tide gates, evaluate the type of tide gate that you're using and evaluate where you're placing it. Tide gates do require maintenance over time, even if you get more expensive tide gates, they still get clogged, they get jammed with debris, so you have to be able to access them in order to maintain them and have them function appropriately. So putting a tide gate on the, on the end of the outfall pipe, it's out 20 feet out of the canal, typically not the best place to put it. Quite often, you can, you'd be better off locating the tide gate at a structure that's just inland from the coastal edge, and putting the tide gate down in an area that is a catch basin or something of a similar structure that is easily accessed by equipment, by manpower, be able to come in, remove the grate, remove the sediment accumulation, because that keeps the valve from opening, remove any debris that might get log jammed into it that would allow that, basically, that tide valve to not be effective and allow water to backflow through.
So most of our pipes, I believe, are corrugated plastic pipes, so I don't think you're going to hang a valve on the end of that, but we should be able to drop a vault in, put a tide gate in that?
Yes. And the, I guess, there, there are tide gates that are similar, some of the ones that I looked at on the, on the island here are basically the old flapper valve type, and those are usually the ones that require the most maintenance, and usually are the ones that are most susceptible to jams. Because once it's kicked open, whether it's a rock or a limb or something else there, it stayed open until that debris is removed. And quite often, the flow that's coming through it isn't enough to dislodge the debris. If you look at some of the more effective tide gate structures, they have, they're provided by different manufacturers out there, Tideflex is one of them, that makes something that looks similar to a nipple on a, on a baby bottle, it's a polymer device that's connected to the pipe, and then it squeezes closed. Just based on the way that it's made, it has a resilient seal on it. Those are fairly effective. There's also devices that you can put inside the pipe itself that allow flow to pass one way and not the other way. Those are more similar to a check valve that you'd find in a pressure water system. And then the, all of these valves can be either located on the end of the pipe, or located, like I said before, in a structure, whether it's actually hanging on the pipe, or it's flanged mounted to the wall of the structure, there's a variety of different ways that you could apply these. And what we typically do is go through and look at what is the most accessible location, where do we have available land within the existing system to be able to utilize a structure or implement a structure and application? And then obviously, there is, as you mentioned before, a long-term maintenance that goes along with these, and part of that operations and maintenance cost included in the stormwater utility addresses that future maintenance that would be needed for these types of devices.
Thank you.
I have a quick question for Chris. So now that the boulevard is paved, do you still see that these are the five critical areas? Because I haven't really noticed flooding in those areas since it's been paved. I see maybe it's shifting to other areas. Obviously, the pier is, you know, the parking lot is getting flooded when we have a rain event, but...
I absolutely feel like that's the key areas, you know, as far as I see it, I'm waiting. And that's just, I hear you raining here, I don't think we've really had any, any rain since that little boat that paved, you know, I'm thinking of it, I know we have seen a little asphalt that kept the situation, I would think, but I think there's still going to be a problem.
Anybody else have a question? Thank you very much for your presentation, your time and effort.
Thank you.
If you have anything.
Thank you.
Our witness, number 8A, Madam Clerk.
We have three firms apply for the attorney position. You've interviewed all three of them. I put ballots at your desks if you would like to vote by ballot unless somebody has a better suggestion. So if you guys want to vote, I could tell you, or we could do it any other way.
Well, it's a pleasure, the commissioners, how do you want to vote?
Ballot, please.
Is that a consensus of the board to vote by ballot?
Sure.
All right, vote by ballot. You got any instructions of how to vote by ballot, Madam Clerk?
No, sure, well, as long as everybody signs there, then select one, we're good to go.
All right, please vote and turn your ballots in to the clerk.
I started my test before I got the instructions.
I started my test before I got the instructions.
Congratulations on my interview.
No, no.
Madam Clerk, how long do you think it will take you to tabulate those answers?
I was just going to write down the answer, unless you want me to just announce it. I did good enough. There you go.
Is that your final decision?
Yes, sir.
After much time and consideration and review, the town clerk is announcing that Moore Law Firm will be our new town attorney. With much appreciation to our interim attorney. All right, we're going to go to number nine, Police Department Chief Dixon.
Good evening, how are y'all?
Good.
So for the report this month, as you can see, we are in full summer swing. Just the calls for service was four pages, almost 900. Of course, a lot of those are business residence checks we're doing day and night, but the other calls for service are, are just that time of year for us. We've really taken a focused approach this summer. We've been doing it for years, but we've really tried to focus on low-speed vehicles this summer and the new bike lanes which have come in. We're getting, getting a lot of comments, concerns for people parking in the bike lanes. That's, that's a big one, so we're, we're really trying to take a focused approach to get ahead of that as much as we can. It's, it's still, said it for months, it's a learning curve for all of us, so I think the community is starting to figure it out. I think our officers are starting to figure it out. So I think we are making forward progress and headed in the right direction on it. It's definitely not perfect, but we're, we're all getting there together as a community. Really, and you'll, you'll notice on the...
Where does that start? Starts...
17.
What I was looking for, yes, no, I start on 17, but the, the next section there on, on page 22 starts with our ordinance. And you'll notice it's parking, 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 parking for a good three, four pages of that. So a big issue we had in May was, was parking. And again, that's something else we're trying to get ahead of. You'll notice a lot of those are Ocean Boulevard related, which goes back to the bike lanes. So that's really where a lot of our focus have been for the last couple of months is parking, bike lanes, low-speed vehicles. That's what we've got going on so far. I give a quick public service announcement for next month. Before we meet again, it is going to be 4th of July, if my math is correct. So Holden Beach does not put on a fireworks display, and we ask you not to put one on for us. They are, they are, they are dangerous to the dunes, they are dangerous to your neighbors' houses, they are dangerous to yourself. We do not want you to lose fingers, we don't want you to burn anything down. So do not light fireworks. Unless, that's going to be my spiel of that. If you light them, we ride them. Other than that, if you have questions, comments, or concerns, I'd be glad to try to address them.
Commissioners, have any questions of our police chief?
I'm here, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you do, you and your whole department, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Evans, inspections?
Well, we're still a little busy. Active new home permits is 42, other active permits are 366. Permits issued over 30,000 is 35, permits issued over 10,011. Permits for substantial improvements were three. Permits that are right now have been issued and waiting for someone to pick them up is 23. Total permits is 431. Permits in review is seven at this time. We issued four KAMA permits, and of course, the zoning that was issued was seven. And I, I hope everybody understands that whenever we, these permits that are land usage and not trade-oriented, every single one of them gets a zoning review, and a lot of them also get KAMA permits or get, have to have a camera review. Permit service for inspections was 181. Those are the ones we put our hands on, that we have to go out to, and the total inspections made this month is 362. We're still real busy over there, phones ringing off the hook. That's all I have.
Any questions of Mr. Evans from the commissioners?
None for me, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Evans, for you and your department doing a good job. Mr. McCraneey, do we have any money?
Yeah, a little bit. Everything's pretty in line with last year. The parking revenue is still showing up, showing in B Part now instead of General Fund, so there's the variance in revenues for General Fund and B Part Fund from last year, but when you take that into account, it's right as much as last year.
All right. Anybody have any questions of the finance officer?
So we're 12 days away from the end of the year, right? Okay. So it looks like we're going to drop some money to the fund balances in both accounts? Is that, I mean, just based on the end of May report, it was like a million bucks in each one.
Well, this is, this is on a monthly basis.
You went and looked at the report online?
Yeah, I looked at the, at the online report, the, the revenues and expenses as of the end of May.
Oh, yeah, yeah, there, there will be, I mean...
It's like a million dollars in, in General Fund and 1.4 in B Part. I just, I mean, that...
Yeah, I mean, there, we might have some big expenses, I think maybe for the core study, possibly by the end of the year, but that might go into next year, so other than that, that's about right.
Okay.
Anybody else have a question? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Dan.
Mr. Hewitt, Town Manager, report.
Yes, sir. Contrary to what is in the packages tonight, I do have some information relating to the Greensboro Street lift station. We've got the goheads in hand from both EPA and DEQ in order to bid the project. It's like, I guess they were, they go quiet and go silent and don't talk to you, and all of a sudden, it just cabs like a glacier and bust loose. So that, that's where we are. So we've mustered together our project development team and have a meeting tomorrow to beat the calendar into shape. This thing's going to shape up pretty, pretty quickly. I believe we're probably are looking at a July-August formulation to go out, but that is contingent on what I, what we work through with the project development team tomorrow. By the way, EPA is conducting advanced monitoring on our project with one desktop review already having been performed on our current status. So EPA is a bit different entity. We can, we've been told we can expect on-scene EPA officials during construction work, not week, but work. Harbor Acres Canal dredging, we've received the grant reimbursement from them for almost 100, from DWR for almost $150,000. The Corps has finished the navigation maintenance work in the Lock and Folly inlet. Should have a fairly clear path to the ocean now. On 441 Ocean Boulevard walkway and the emergency ramp, that's at the pier, the new structure at the pier, we've got a $41,000 grant reimbursement that's been applied for. And along the lines of walkways, the one at 329 Ocean Boulevard, the redo there is underway, and the estimated completion date is the last day of this fiscal year. Regarding the water system asset inventory and the streets assessment, both of those have been received and are undergoing internal review at present. That's all I have tonight.
And commissioners, have any questions?
I, I just had a question on the lift station, going out to bid, what's the, is it one bid or just, what are we going out to bid for, scope of work that we're...
The designs that the engineer has prepared will be what goes out to bid.
For construction of those, those designs?
Yes, sir.
Anybody else, commissioners? All right, thank you, Mr. Hewitt. We're on number 13. Mr. Evans?
Chief Dixon, don't start with the right one this time. All right. Ordinance number 24-08. An ordinance amending the Holden Beach Code of Ordinance to Section 154 for flood damage I think this is the second time it's been presented. Y'all need to take into consideration the, the, just a second, the consistency statement if you intend to approve the changes to the ordinance. There any questions?
Anybody have a comment, question?
Just going to make a motion to accept the ordinance as amended and the consistency statement.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded, discussion, anybody? Mr. Parfus?
No.
Yes, sir. All in favor of the motion say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion is unanimous.
Number 14, you want to go to number 14?
Yes, sir, number 14.
Okay. Discussion possible action on ordinance 2410. This is the ordinance amending the Holden Beach Code of Ordinance to Section 94.03, Frontal Dune Policies and Regulations, and Chapter 157 of the zoning code. So you're basically deleting those sections out of 94.03, and you're adding them to 157, which also requires y'all to consider the consistency statement, because you're now putting it in for the land usage section.
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 24-10, amending 24-03 on the frontal dunes.
Your second?
Second.
Mr. Parfus has a second, anybody want to...
I have a couple of questions. Just, I just want to know on clear on what's been lined out and what's been added, but it sounds like you can now extend your walkway to the KAMA frontal dune, which is the one out there, versus the town's frontal dune, which is closer to the house. Is that correct?
That, that is correct, but there are still dune regulations in 94.3 that talks about knocking, unnecessarily knocking down damage, and that the KAMA can, officer can assess it. It's never happened, but it's still in. That would be the only thing that would restrict you from being able to go through the KAMA tow now instead of the town's frontal dune.
Okay.
So that, what that does is get you across all the grass, get you across all the dunes, out to the last line of, basically outside, to the, almost the last line of natural table vegetation, in most cases. You won't have to, you won't have to hold it way back.
Okay. And then it, I want to make sure I'm interpreting this right on 157024 about structures. You can build a deck, gazebo, sitting area forward of the town dune as long as...
It's still, it's limited to that width. Widths didn't change.
Okay.
So you're limited to the width that you can build. What it did was it added it to accessory structures, so it'd have to meet the KAMA setbacks, because now you're going all the way out, nowhere, so you got your, you're going to have to stay within your property lines all the way out to the high water mark, because that's where your property stops. So we included it into the accessory structure so that it, because the accessory structures have setbacks that are less than, than the residential, than a house.
Okay.
That's why we did it, because it wasn't in there before. Walkways weren't in the accessory structure.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions?
Could, would it be possible to add the consistency statement to that motion, or do you want to have a separate motion? I just need the consistency statement also approved.
What are you proposing it says?
I wouldn't want to have you add that.
To your motion.
Could you just add inconsistency statement to the motion?
Okay, everybody understand what's being proposed?
Yes, sir.
Are you ready to vote?
Yes, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's unanimously approved. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Evans. Number 15, Mr. Hewitt.
Yes, sir. The proposed budget is balanced in accordance with the Physical Control Act, and is a result of numerous engagements with the board through the course of the seasonal budget workshops. We held the required public hearing at the beginning of the meeting, and the proposed budget lies before you for your consideration and action.
All right, anybody have a motion you want to make?
Yes, sir, I do.
All right, sir.
There's three changes I would like to see made. I can capture them all in one motion, I think, or we can take them separately.
That would be good.
Okay. Motion to amend the proposed ordinance to change the tax rate back to the current rate of 14 cents per $100 of assessed value, provide for a detective position, and increase the merit pool to 2.5 percent.
Have a motion. Everybody understand the motion? And if so, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Anybody wanting to discuss? Hearing none. You ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Madam Clerk, it's three to two. Motion carries. All right, we're on number 17.
Excuse me, sir. Don't we need to make a motion to approve the ordinance as amended?
Yeah.
Motion to approve the ordinance as amended.
I'll second that also.
Hold it just a minute.
Sorry.
All right, Madam Clerk.
I, the way that I wrote it down, I thought you approved it, but I would say just go ahead and do it just in case. I'd rather have double to... I, I think you said a motion to approve the amendment with it, but if I'd be better just to go ahead, just in case.
There you go, making it hard again, sorry.
I thought you just made amendments.
Oh, yeah, it's very possible.
Now we want to approve the ordinance as amended.
I would do it.
Motion to approve the budget ordinance as amended.
I'll second that.
Okay. Everybody clear?
Yep.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. So everybody's in agreement on what we just did. Okay. All right, we're on number 17 in regards to 796 OBW. Mr. Hewitt?
Yeah, we're going to make this real, this explanation real simple. We got a, the way the upset bid process works is you, you have to have an initial bid accepted by the board to establish it as a baseline in order to advertise for the upset bid process. What this does, your acceptance by approval of the resolution, it sets the baseline, the initial bid, at $345,000, and then lays out the process by which the clerk has to advertise and engage in the upset bid process. I think that what everybody should know, this, this could go on for five months, it's getting higher and higher and higher, but at the end...
Or longer.
Or longer, yeah. But at the end, if it's not high enough, the board can throw out everything and start over. That's, that's, I think that's what everybody is wanting to know.
Also, Mr. Hewitt, explain this as a state guideline.
Oh, this is, this is, this is the protocol that the state, that we follow by the 160 series of the general statutes.
Yeah, so can I just make a clarification? We're, we're not allowed to actually list it as a, with a realtor in a multiple listing, correct? Because this is a municipal property, that isn't how you do it. For people that may have mentioned that during... For people that may have mentioned that during their comments, that isn't actually a process that we're allowed to do? Call a realtor and say, "List it." Can we do that?
Well, what, in, in that scenario, I, I, we had gone over the board's preferred process last time, but in, hypothetically, I don't know if that's okay, but you would have to go through, you would have to procure a realtor just like you would any other service. Okay? So if you want to pick a realtor and have it, we're gonna have to de-conflict whether that's allowed at all, but the board should pick the realtor if that's the way to go.
I, I thought we were told that that was not an option when, when we initially started this process. We were, right, Rick? Right?
I thought this was the best option.
But my understanding, this was the recommended, strongly recommended approach.
Yes. It's private negotiation, I believe. I don't recall the statute off the top of my head.
I move we accept the bid and start the process of upset bid.
I second.
We didn't get his question asked.
I'm sorry.
Were you, were you asking? Or were you...
I'm not able to answer your question this evening without revisiting what I told you last month and the statute unless the attorney has the statute ready for.
No worries.
But we had gone through this and it did not seem like it was appropriate to have a realtor to sell the property.
Right. The chair's ready to recognize the motion maker and the seconding party unless the commissioners direct otherwise. So what's your pleasure?
I, I think we move ahead. We accept this and start the process and see where it takes us. We can always, we have nothing to lose. So my motion is to accept the bid and start, go to the next step in the process.
Except the initial...
The resolution.
Expect, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, we have to pass the resolution?
Okay.
Accept and approve.
Okay, so I will withdraw that motion.
Make the motion to accept the resolution.
I need a motion to accept the resolution, 24-06, which is authorizing the upset bid process.
And I'll second.
Okay, discussion.
Can I just, you do want to go with the version that Sidney said with the last sentence changed, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Gotcha. It's just, it was on your desk, it's the last sentence, talk, it's the wording of it. Same meaning, different wording.
And it's on the back page, yeah, there you go.
Madam Clerk, will you help the audience?
Yes.
Present and online, understand what we're doing.
Yes. The resolution, our attorney just changed the last line to read, the town of Holden Beach reserves the right to withdraw the property until at any time before the high, final high bid is accepted and the right to reject any and all bids at any time. Just amended that.
Commissioners, understand where we are?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
No discussion.
No discussion.
I mean, I don't have anything else to say, but maybe someone else.
All right, are you ready to vote and say? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it's unanimous, Madam Clerk. We've got this resolution taken care of and now we are on number 18 with Chief Dixon and his fire chief here.
He's there.
There he is, over there. I didn't see you, Mr. Todd, Chief Todd. Appreciate your being here, sir.
So Chief Todd and I were talking and we usually like to bring solutions instead of problems, but we didn't want to bring a solution to you and y'all get blindsided by, "Where was this from?" So, so today, tonight, we are not presenting a solution. We are just presenting an issue that we're seeing and hoping that the board will support us in moving forward with coming up with some solutions. So the simplest terms, and I'll let Chief Todd, he sees it more than I do, especially right, because you know his department's right there across from the beach access. We're seeing issues where our officers and the fire departments having trouble getting out there because people are setting up their beach equipment right in front of the access. When you come across the dune and get ready to come, there's equipment right there where there's tents, canopies, even volleyball nets. So I think he's actually started putting some cones out there temporarily just to get across that section, but it doesn't help us going down the entire length of the beach. That's my spiel and I'll let you add anything you want to in the document.
Yeah, just to reiterate what Chief Dixon said, we've been having some issues getting up and down, getting onto the beach to start with, and now we start to see issues as far as they put tents right down near the high watermark. So now we have nowhere to travel once we do get down on the beach. So we've got to come up with a solution to fix us a travel lane where we can get the emergency vehicles up and down the, the beach strand. We had an issue the other day when the boat ran around on the beach that we couldn't even get under the pier because people, even there's the signs there, they were under there out of the sun, sitting in chairs in between where the signs is posted already. So we've got to come up with something that's, with an ordinance to try to help us where we can solve those issues.
So can I ask you, what do other beaches do? Do they have like a, a spot where all the way down the beach, you're not allowed to sit?
Sunset Beach has an ordinance, I believe, that's in place that designates an area that where they can put tents up at, so they, they have a, a lane area clear. And I have a, I've got a copy of that and sent to Chief Dixon for us to review.
Good.
In, in their ordinance, everything's up against the fence, though? Wouldn't you want it away from the fence?
That, that was, I think, where do you want to have the clear lane going up and down the beach? I mean, do you want...
That's, that's why we're here, seeking y'all's input on where y'all feel like it needs to be and let's look at some other towns and what they put in place. We just recognize that the issue, now that they're getting more and more of these canopies being put up out there, that we don't, we don't have anywhere to drive.
I'm, I'm on the oceanfront, it's time, and we, we see that, but the majority of the people are, like you say, at the high tide line or they fluctuate with the tide to where it is up closer to the sand dunes, you know, they're, they're not so much in your way there. I mean, I would hate to restrict somebody from being right close to the water, but then again, it's, we've, you know, it's hard to restrict you. That's, that's the beach, you know, there's, you know, as far as you getting on the beach, yeah, right there in those areas, but I'm close to the 800 access and, you know, with this, when people come from the parking lot, they walk straight ahead and stop right there. They don't want to go further. So I can see where there could be maybe some need for the, the town to put together us, put together for us to review an ordinance that would clear the pathway out to the beach, but it's, you know, it's, it's gonna be hard for, especially for the visiting, you know, us that live here is one thing, but the visiting public, it's gonna be hard for them to tell them they can't, well, they won't understand where they're not supposed to be.
Right. And I think the one that, that Sunset designates an area so far from the frontal dune where they can put tents and they're not allowed to put them any further closer to the water. As far as them putting chairs and sitting in chairs, it's a, it doesn't restrict that. It's just putting the tents up.
Well, you getting up down the beach, you don't want to run into somebody in a chair either, either.
Yeah, but I mean, they, they can either grab it, move it, you can't move it once that tent's taken down, it's hard to move it. I mean, we've had, we don't have, we don't want to have issues with them moving once we get out on the stand up, grab your chair and move it, but when you got a tent in place, it's hard to move that.
You're referring specifically to those 10 by 10 canopies, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So are you, just to clarify, you want to drive down by the water or you want to drive down up by the dunes?
Right now, the town uses up next to the dunes to be able to pick up the trash. So that's a town area they're using for that. We need to be able to get down near the water because we got to launch a jet ski.
So you need it from the emergency access to the water?
All the way down the beach. I mean, if we can't get to where the person's in distress at, then we're no good either.
Well, I, I watched the trash guy go up and down the beach every day and he goes right up along the, the dunes and there never seems to be, I mean, the guys that are, run the company that put those tents up, they seem to stay far enough down to keep out of that path between the dunes. That's soft sand, you know, it's difficult for you to operate in. However, the man that picks up the trash does it very well. And then like you said, if you get to the point where you need to be, then, you know, you can pick a point to get between the, I believe, one of those to get down. But the main thing would be, I think, at the entrance ways, that's, that is very well understood and, and, you know, just say you, we want you to leave a space, you know, close to the dunes where it's clear that we can go straight up the beach.
Yeah.
But getting them off close to the water, you know, this is a vacation place.
And, and we're just, we're just here with, with a problem we know that is here, whatever we come up with, we'll work, we work within that parameter. I mean, we, we got to look at something to try to...
Yeah, I'd like you guys to look into it, see what the other islands are doing, how it works for them, and let us know what's, what's happening there.
And are there any existing ordinances? I mean, you know, can't park by a fire station, can't, I mean, can't block an emergency, there's no ordinance that we can leverage to stop it?
To my knowledge, the only ordinance is that you can't leave stuff overnight.
Okay.
And that's as much for safety for driving down the beach at night.
Okay.
It's also for wildlife protection and other things.
Can we, maybe...
Can we do signage?
Ask staff to, to come up with some ideas on, on a ordinance and then maybe get it back to us for review or at least for the interest into the beach. Is that the proper way to do it?
I think that's what they're asking you for.
We didn't want to come here and spend a whole lot of time with coming up with something and y'all not even interested in it. That's kind of what we're asking for.
Let me see if I can help out unless somebody jettled me talking. Can we just agree on the consensus of the board to ask the staff to work and bring back a steady proposal at the next meeting?
Sound like a plan.
Is that all right with you two guys?
Yes, sir, that's what we asked.
Thank you very much for all the good work you do.
I, can I clarify on that? Um, yes, because you said the next meeting. We, we are in the heat of summer. I do not, it's an issue, I don't think it's an issue we're gonna solve this summer, so...
Need to start working on it.
We're, we're gonna start working on it. I, I don't want to obligate myself to have any presentation ready for...
No, no, I'm talking about having the staff to come back with the suggestion and review, that's all.
Okay.
And I think that's what the commissioners...
Yes, sir.
I, I just have one more question. Is this something the beach patrol, because I know they stop, tell people not to dig holes and put their dog in the lead. I know they don't have authority, but, you know, please leave this access open. Can they do anything?
Well, let's see what they come up with.
Well, in the meantime, can't we ask the beach patrol to at least have the entrance, you know, not blocked?
There's nothing that we can make.
We can, we can ask them to ask, but there would be no ordinance, so like the other things that they enforce, the holes, tents and dogs, there's an ordinance that they can point to when somebody goes, "Well, why can't I?" There's no "why can't I" that they can point to to say...
No, but I mean, I think if they ask politely and give them a reason, it would make sense and, I mean, they can't enforce it, but they can certainly request it.
I tell you the problem I ran into is a lot of these people are renting them. Rental companies come over and set them up. People are not even there with them. So nobody asked to move it because there's nobody there.
Yeah. So the rental companies are blocking the access for them?
They're putting these, they were renting them, they're putting them up. Closest place they have access, we're putting them up.
Okay.
So, I mean, there's nobody there with them. But we ran into that problem a few times as well.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we're on number 19.
Um, there are several terms expiring on town boards. I would recommend board to hold interviews before the next board meeting on the 16th at 4:45 or somewhere close to that, and then I will send out an advertisement soliciting people if that works for the board.
Works for me.
Consent it, yeah.
I would like to suggest if we do it, let's do it maybe either on the 16th or 17th of July, either the 16th or the 17th before our regular meeting.
Yeah, I think that's what she's suggesting.
The regular meeting is July the 16th.
But make it earlier at 4:45.
Yeah, it's 4:40, I mean, we can do it 4:45 if that works. If you guys want to do 4:30, it's, it doesn't typically take long, but it's up to the board.
Sounds good, Heather.
Good with whatever. So, Don, let's...
I'm sorry, can I just ask a question? Heather, on page 87, should the very first one also be highlighted that says vacant? John Kane's regular position?
Oh, yeah, it is, it's very faint for some reason.
Oh, it's not highlighted on ours at all?
Yeah, my, I don't know what's wrong with the copy and that's why I need you guys on the copies too, but yeah, he's, he's on mine.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I'll do 4:45 if that works for the board, but if I have a ton, do you want me to do 4:30?
I can't do it any earlier than 4:45.
Do 4:45.
Okay, we might get a call.
The chair has no idea what's going on. What, what, had a discussion on the right, we had a discussion on the left. What are we doing?
I think everybody told me 4:45 is okay on Tuesday, Tuesday of the board meeting.
Whatever the pleasure the board is. 4:45, is that what you guys want?
Yes.
Can you get here, Don?
It's fine. It really doesn't matter. I don't really have a say.
All right, 4:45 for the audience and the people listening, 4:45, Tuesday, July the 16th. Interviews for vacant positions on committees and boards. All right. Okay, we are on number 20, if I'm not mistaken. Anybody wants to talk about anything? It does not have to be on the agenda. If you raise your hands, be rec, hand and be recognized and come to the podium, give us your name and your address of Holden Beach. Yes, ma'am. Sorry about that. You're the only person that has special music tonight. Soon as he figures I have a, yeah, start talking. All right, yes, ma'am. Fight with the new smartphone.
Struggle.
It's winning. I turned it off and now you know why. Sorry, anyway, I apologize.
Don't worry. My name is Millie Ross. I live on Bellamy Drive, just over the... Come on, I think. I would like to recommend, propose, request, however you want to say it, that Holden Beach hire lifeguards and implement a flag system to warn visitors and locals of the conditions of the waters, whether it be rips or marine life, like jellies or sharks present, things like that. Other Carolina beaches, I understand, have had these, some of them since the 1930s, so something to think about. I moved here from Orange Beach, Alabama, beach town and on the Gulf of Mexico, and they have, since 2008, they now have 28 lifeguards, six static stands, wooden with the roofs and everything. They have roving patrols with lifeguards on them, six Honda ATVs, three beach trucks, two jet skis. Now, I know, it's expensive. This is all funded for in Orange Beach by, I spoke to the mayor and the chief, fire chief and everything, funded by the hospitality taxes, and I know, it's expensive, but what is the value of a life? And it's almost, especially if it's your loved one, and I feel like it's almost a moral obligation that it happen because, you know, you're inviting the people to this beautiful beach and everything, and if we can help keep people safer, I just appreciate your consideration, your time. I appreciate what you do for the community and I appreciate you letting me speak. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else want to speak about anything? Yes, ma'am.
All right. Third time's a charm. Lisa Ragland, again, 115 Salisbury. Two things that the board has voted on previously. We just want to make sure you're aware and that we're working on them diligently. Now that we're getting past budget season, which I know is the top priority, back in the April Board of Commissioners meeting, the town staff was unanimously requested to research the viability of the private-public partnership with the LGC. We haven't heard an update on that. Just want to make sure that that's continuing to move forward. And at the May meeting, it was also unanimously approved that the town staff would prepare an RFP for board review and possible approval to move forward with the pier project plans. So, I just want to keep that on the top of everyone's priority now that we're moving past the budget season, and hopefully we can get those on next month's meeting.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Will Carter, 108 Starfish Drive, again. The legislators told me that if we can go ahead now and put in a request for some money for a pier, we would be able to hit it with the next budget session. Now, we lost the chance to get it in this last session, but it doesn't cost anything. So, you'd be glad to know that, I'm sure. But it does take agreement among you guys. And I know we're having problems with that now. But it doesn't take much, just a letter requesting some money or requesting help with some money. As far as the fire department goes, that is one of the only places on the beach that the fire department will work there. I know he's talked to Tim Evans. I've talked to Chris. These, this is a good idea. It won't cost anything. All we need is the permitting and try and get the access. And I've already talked to Kama, and I'm talking to the state college. But we need the board to be for this. If we can create a parcel of property where a fire station proper could be built, which is higher than the high water mark, which that spot is there at Greensboro and Ocean Boulevard, then we can have a fire station where people could stay overnight, where the trucks won't get wet during a flood. And these are both things that will cost a minimal amount of money. We need to get the Kama, get the permitting, get the permitting for the bulkhead. And on the pier, we need to write a letter and say, "We Holden Beach would like to have some money for the pier. We'd like to work out a plan for the state to help us." So, it's, it's not anything that's going to cost us any money. And you don't get anything if you don't ask. And so, let's please try and get together and let's ask. And let's try and get the fire station. So, we'll have somebody here 24 hours, 12 months out of the year to pick people up off the floor to go revive them when they have a heart attack. Fires are one, just one part that the fire department does. So, I wish you would all work on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Anybody else want to say anything about anything? Does not have to be on the agenda. All righty. We're going to move on to the next item on the agenda. Mayor's comments number 21. I'm going to be very brief and just simply say that tonight's actions by the board reflects that there were no financial discrepancies having been found. Let's work together to move forward and show that the people and the board appreciate and support the town staff and all the volunteers because we're all in this together. And let's move on down the road and work with facts and maybe less loose talk. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, pro Tim. You have the floor, sir.
I'd just like to thank everyone for coming. And those of you that are watching online, thanks for participating virtually. And thanks to everyone who has sent in their comments and letters and advice. It's truly appreciated. I'm glad you're engaged and involved with the town. Have a good night.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir. It was, it was really nice to see a room full of folks tonight. That just shows how many people are really concerned about the health and well-being of our, this beautiful place we get to live in. Like Mr. Caldwell, Doc Caldwell said earlier tonight, we live in a gated, non-gated community. I mean, it's really, we have all the amenities that we could ever ask for. As far as civility, I think we were tonight, we just, we had a really nice meeting. We agreed to disagree on a few things. But, you know, this is, is our right as, as from the, from the Constitution that we have the right freedom of speech and expression. So, it's, it's good that we could all talk and express our feelings. And it's, again, we've got, you know, no direction in anybody, but just that we can all work together. I want to thank all of our town employees for their hard work and dedication. Our town manager, he does an excellent job. He did a great job getting this budget together, got it done on time. It was a, a, a great effort by him as well as Daniel to get all this stuff done. And we've got to remember that he also helped us get the largest beach renourishment project that's ever been done at Holden Beach. He got it done for us for little to no expense. Our assistant town manager, she works unbelievably hard getting applications together, getting all the information that's necessary to get us money that we can have to use for available access to the beach as well as to take care of some of our ADA requirements with the restrooms and all of that at a fraction of the cost. Heather always does a great job running our meetings and keeping us in order and helps us follow the rules. Chris and his staff, Scott, and those guys work countless hours after hours to make sure that we've got water coming to our house. And more importantly, we get the byproducts out. And those are, you know, Chris, I, I don't see how him and Scott and his guys can, can handle it, especially now that we've got the island full of people. They are, they're really working really hard. Our police chief, we could not ask for a better police chief for any, any town, no matter what size. He, he keeps us, does exactly what he's supposed to do, serve and protect. We are, we are all protected by his officers that look after us. And now, thank goodness for the board, their directions to give him a detective. So, the morale of his guys, when they write up somebody, somebody stole him something, they don't say, "Well, you know, there we go. Might as well throw it in the trash because nothing's going to happen." Well, now, the efforts of your officers can be pursued. So, I hope you can be successful in finding us a detective sometime soon. Our office staff, the girls in our office, they, they, I don't see how in the world they get all the stuff done that they get done. They do the billing, the tax billing, all that stuff. And even when the auditors came in, they said they don't know how in the world we get done what we get done with the staff that we have. Tim, you and your staff, doggone six, 300 and some inspections in a month. Man, you do that, divide that by the number of days. You and your staff are doing a great job keeping up. You evidently have got everybody marching to the same drummer now. There doesn't seem to be any of the scuttlebutt there used to be. And that's, that's, that's really, really appreciated. As I said about our accounting staff, well, they run a tight ship. It's good that we got through this agenda process easily. And for anybody to say at any time that they don't trust our staff is absolutely ridiculous. I guess it's the lack of trust is the reason we had to have so many budget meetings, I mean, and workshops. It was thought that we had a revenue problem. But in fact, at the end of the year, we're going to have a surplus. Also, the budget has been gone through like with a fine tooth comb, and nothing has been spent or misappropriated. And there was no 30 to 40 percent variance. After spending nine workshops that put a burden on some of us commissioners, the votes that were taken during the workshops, when we were told there wasn't going to be any workshops, it just wasn't appreciated. But we've got to move forward. As the mayor said earlier tonight, we, we, everybody in this room, all of us commissioners and all the staff, we're all in this together. We've got, we've got to move forward, and we've got to move Holden Beach forward. As far as the golf carts, chief, that was one of my pet peeves. The percentage of people wearing seat belts has flip-flopped from, you know, 99% are wearing them and only 1% are. The issue is the bike lanes. And I know you're going to try to address that. I want everybody, everybody here, everybody that's listening, and all the people that are going to visit our beach, to have a safe and fun Fourth of July. But remember, no fireworks. If you light it, you's going to die. Thank you.
Ms. Thomas?
So, I just wanted to thank the staff for all their hard work with the budget. I know it was a big learning curve for some of us, and you had to do a lot of extra meetings. And I really appreciate that you did that. We never said that we weren't going to make decisions when we were presented with a balanced budget. When we had those workshops, that was when we were prepared to make some changes, and that's what we did. Those meetings were on the calendar for six months. People should have cleared their calendars so that they could attend them. I also wanted to say thank you to the beautification club because they did a wonderful job at the fire station. They have a great stuff that when you come over the bridge, everybody sees that and expects it. But there's some really pocket parks that have done a wonderful job, and, and the island looks beautiful. And I just wanted them to be acknowledged. Have a great Fourth of July. Thank you.
Dr. Dyer?
I want to thank the town employees. We have an excellent staff here. They work hard. We are very, you're very appreciative. I hope you know that. I know over the last couple of months, it may not seem that way, but you certainly are appreciated. The budget presented to us June the 3rd was a balanced budget that David and Daniel and the whole staff worked on. I appreciate the hard work. It was a good budget, and I'm glad that we were able to get that approved and move forward. I was appreciative of all the comments that I received about the support of the detective. We have an excellent chief. He wouldn't ask for anything if he didn't need it. So, I'm glad that we've got that, and we can move forward with that. That's greatly appreciated. I want to, my summer public service announce, announcement, we, the reason we have an ordinance to keep pets off the beach from 9 to 5, it's not to keep you from having your, your pet with you on an outing. There's dangers to your pet this time of year. And I want to reiterate and remind people that if you're wearing flip-flops because your feet are being burned, or you're carrying your child because they're, they're barefoot and their feet are being burned. But I see people walking their dog, and they're tiptoeing across the hot sand. Dogs get sunburnt. Dogs get salt poisoning. Dogs get sand impaction. Please, there's a reason that we have the ordinance to keep the dogs off the beach between 9 to 5. It's to keep them safe. The closest emergency clinic is an hour away. Your dog's having a heat stroke on a Saturday, it's having salt poisoning, you may not make it to the emergency clinic. I hope everyone has a safe Fourth of July. I was able to, to listen to the concert off the waterway the other day on my jet ski. And you've done an excellent job, Christie and the staff, of making do with what you've got. And I think everybody's enjoying it. People at Provisions are listening to the concert. Everybody across the waterway is listening to it. So, I really appreciate you taking a bad situation and making it excellent. And I just want to thank everybody for coming out tonight.
Mr. Parfus?
I'd like to second all the positive comments the other commissioners have made. I'd like to thank the staff for working with us to get through the budget process. I'm glad we got that done tonight. I'm looking forward to moving forward on other important town business. There's a lot we've got to get into. I hope everyone will consider serving on the committee. That's important work. We need the help. Last, I'd like to say, I hope everyone has a happy and safe Fourth, and we will see you next month.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Mayor, if I can make a motion to adjourn?
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you all for being here.